Be less bad by afternoon with highs right up in the teens and just in time for the weekend. If you want to be outdoors, pretty reasonable temperatures.
I'm gonna squeeze you, Elroy.
There's Steve.
I'm here.
Hi. We hear you live and clear. Thank you, Elroy, for being patient with us.
How long did it take?
Uh, twenty.
Twenty minutes. Hi, Elroy.
Hi, Elroy.
Hi, Elroy. Did you find the, uh...
Oh, yes.
You were not home. You were out gallivanting around again. So I, I left it in your, in your closet. Trees.
Hello? Farmer's yard. That's interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really, and like, and like with fruit.
Really nice. Thank you.
It's because it has butter in it, so it's an artificial clear. Hot damn.
What do you think? Elroy's just dribbling. He can wear his balls out sometimes. Thank you, Elroy.
Oh, he's trying to poison me. Don't you know?
Elroy, she wanted chocolate.
Chocolate. Chocolate popcorn?
No, you wanted chocolate earlier.
Yeah, I did. I did. I did. I wanted chocolate.
I just ate McDonald's, so.
Okay, it's now eighteen twenty-two. We'll resume our going ahead and budget review. I believe you left off with, uh, you left, you finished that way, and we're gonna do cemetery, which is page nineteen. If you go down, you'll see tree removal remains has been reduced to four thousand from five, fifty-five hundred. Cemetery con, uh, care contract has been increased by, from fifty-seven three hundred to fifty-nine two zero. I presume that's just, uh, cost of living. Don't forget.
Is this set amount?
Set amount.
Well, it's set, set, percent stole by the department manager.
Okay. Uh, sections at seven thousand. We've increased that to eight thousand. Building property insurance, pretty much the same. All the rest of that line items are pretty static. Uh, we have, uh, we did increase water by ten dollars and removed department supplies. Are there any questions about cemetery O and M? Town garage is next on page twenty. Uh, we scroll down trash disposal. We're keeping it, uh, we're increasing it by two hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred from twenty-three hundred. Uh, we're booking telephone for actuals. We have insurance that is increased. Boiler insurance has increased slightly, twenty dollars. All right. Material supply, electricity, we've increased it by, uh, just about a thousand dollars based on actuals. Solar fees, get that. That stays the same. Heating fuel, we bumped up another, uh, roughly seven hundred dollars. Uh, sewer. And then you have billing and supplies, seven thousand. We bumped that up, Laurie. That is highlighted in yellow, and I do not have my notes.
I'll ask for additional funding for...
Oh, the doors.
Yeah.
That's right. He's gonna reseal. He's not replacing the door. He's gonna put seals on the doors. Any questions on page twenty for the town garage expenditures? Are you done? We'll go to library billing expenses. John chime in if you want to. We're increasing janitorial service by six hundred dollars. We're increasing elevator maintenance from twenty-one hundred to twenty-five hundred. We're doing the security system at five fifty, which used to be budgeted for, well, it was five fifty last year. So that's level funding. Telephone is level funded. Uh, property insurance dropped by three hundred dollars. Boiler machinery insurance is level funded. We go down to electricity. Uh, we're at, our last actual was twenty-five hundred. We're budgeting at two thousand. And then you have the rest of them as you see. Heating fuel is budgeted for sixteen thousand, just like it was last year. Went ten dollars up on water, ten dollars up on sewer, and billing maintenance supplies went from five thousand to seven thousand. Just as a curiosity, does the historical society get to use that building fund or is that separate? It's all one complex. You don't?
I don't know.
Okay.
Historical society does it or not.
All right. Page, that was page twenty-one. Page twenty-two, municipal building expenditures. We have, uh, twenty-four hundred budgeted last year for trash disposal. That disposal, that remains the same. The janitorial went like it did for everybody else, went up six hundred dollars. Administrative, so insurance and, uh, both insurances stay the same. And if you take your, your record down there, we have a thousand dollar increase for heating oil. And that's pretty much all of it for O and M on the municipal building. Are there any questions? And we go to page twenty-three, which is human services budgeted. Senior senis, senior citizens is twenty-five thousand. Brown Public Library is a hundred and thirteen thousand. I'm sorry. It's, uh, went up from one hundred and twelve thousand to a hundred and thirteen thousand. And then you just drop down, and there are no further changes. Are there any other questions? Are there any questions? Page twenty-three. Ground, uh, public library budget. You can just scroll down there. That's, uh, contributions are there. Does anybody want to go through that individually? Okay. Second page of the budget library. That's their thing. Grounds, parks and facilities. Maintenance is, uh, was budgeted, uh, last year at twenty-nine three sixty. We reduced it by almost two thousand dollars for maintenance based on actuals for the year before.
Personnel change.
And then you go through your insurances. Not much you can do about that.
So she brought up a good point that I'd like to discuss.
Okay.
And that's, there was a personnel change. Can you explain to me how that number is developed and who gets paid then?
So one employee, um...
From the town highway crew?
From the town highway crews actually split, split fifty percent grounds, fifty percent highway. So i- if that personnel changes, even though we still have the same number of people, then it can change the allocation. Well, the allocation is still fifty-fifty. It's just last year there was a different person that was doing the grounds. There's a new person this year, so that's why the change.
So my question, you may not know this, the answer to this question is, it's fifty-fifty funded. How much time is spent in the parks and grounds by this individual that splits the time?
I, I can't exactly, but it can generalize that, um...
And maybe I should add one more part. What do they do?
So I believe loosely that they're doing, um, in the summertime, they're doing, they're the ones doing mowing. Most of the mowing in the parks and, um, down in the falls, and I'm not sure if we're going over on Watch Street. Um, so they're doing most of the, the grounds work and like picking up trash. They come up to our building, get...
And the common.
The common, right. That, and then in the wintertime, I would presume they're mostly doing highway. Um, now the, so the, I'll also clarify, their base salary is split fifty-fifty. Their overtime, they write on their timesheet whether they're working for grounds or working for highway. So the overtime goes a hundred percent to whatever category they tell us they're working on. Their base salary, we simply split fifty-fifty.
Because over the years, I've heard that we don't, we don't have enough personnel taking care of shoveling, walks at the library, shoveling in front of the municipal building, doing the winter maintenance in those areas. And my question, and I think you've answered it, they go to highway, so we lose that person to do those types of maintenance things that they're doing for those facilities. I assume they're mowing the lawn in the library. I assume they're doing the common. They're mowing the lawn in front of the municipal building, and there's keeping all that. But I think the missing piece of the puzzle is, and this has always been something that's been brought to our attention by that gentleman right there, that, and my question and discussion going forward is, should we invest in a full-time person in that position for the town to take care of? Because things really don't disappear in the wintertime. They just take on a different look. There's sidewalks to be plowed.
Well, the sidewalk plow is...
No, I mean, I mean in here and coming into these buildings and, yeah, the sidewalk plow obviously takes care of the municipal sidewalks. But are there other things that we're missing in the wintertime that could be addressed by a person? That's all I wanted to start the discussion, because I've heard this over many, many years. And it seems to be a point of frustration for a lot of people that things aren't getting done.
Would I, would you put Elroy on, uh, in budget?
Well, that would be zero effect. See volunteers as time.
Yeah. I'm overpaid as it is. It's always better.
Well, we can give you a three percent raise.
Well, I just wanted to raise that discussion because I think it got lost in the budget discussion over the years. And I was told, well, we really don't need one. But then I hear all these concerns that things aren't getting addressed. That's all.
Okay. Well, we have hired a person to shovel walkways around the library and the library steps.
Out of your own budget?
Out of their own budget. We can have a shovel the municipal building sidewalk. And...
Can't that be done by staff?
They normally do.
These are things that have been brought to our attention as...
Our staff, and he doesn't, Tom, you've done it myself.
Right. I've done it.
The most.
I usually do it in man.
Yeah.
Doug, Doug read the...
Usually Doug does it.
Right.
So there's no need for worrying about the municipal building, because I've heard people come before this board saying, why isn't the municipal building sidewalk cleared?
I think it's cleared. I think one of the things that's hard there is the slope and the sidewalk portion sometimes still gets slippery even when it's been shoveled. It's like, just tricky spot.
But do you think we have other things that are getting neglected in the wintertime?
I don't know. It's a good question. Definitely, I mean, the library steps has been a ongoing issue that has not gotten resolved.
Other maintenance, other maintenance things, like what's going on up at the municipal park? Are those getting plowed out? Are those getting maintained properly?
The municipal park is getting plowed out. We've been up there on, well, just adjusted right out. The ice rink is gonna go in this weekend, and I'm gonna run up to, uh, rendezvous with Jim Russo for the purpose of getting training on how, um, you safely fill a, uh, rink with an inch and a half of fire hose coming off a hydrant with a hundred and thirty pounds of pressure on it. And then how to, the next thing is how to groom what it takes to groom. I thought they had a machine to shave down the ice, and so you're gonna have to probably use a garden hose. And again, it's gonna be under a hundred and thirty pounds of pressure, which I happen to know this from experience this summer.
Yes.
You can take thirty cubic feet of, uh, fill a thirty cubic foot cube in thirteen minutes and twenty-two seconds using, uh, an, uh, pressure, the pressure that we have in the town. So I think we've got that.
So Steve, if you're listening to my conversation, just put that in your notes, maybe to pass on to your successor, that, um, this has come up from time to time. Do we need a full-time person in that position to take care of building maintenance, um, year round? Year round?
Right. Build, that's, that's an issue, because I, I would support that. You've got a tunnel over here that leads from the historical society that goes, that covers the steps.
Yeah, and Laurie brought up some things that need to be attended to in the municipal building as far as society, or somebody did, maybe Sally, also known as Mary, uh, siding falling off those buildings and...
Right.
Things like that. So we're working with, uh, with the budget. Yeah.
Steve's, uh, allowed me to connect with a contractor to see if, I don't have some safety to ship things done first.
So, Dave?
Yeah.
They just, so if I get that right, are you saying that at some point there needs to be consideration of taking a half-time person in the recreation department and making it full-time? Did I get that right?
It's actually, no. It's in the, right now, this position, um, in the grounds and parks facilities is split with...
Okay, okay. I got, I got the wrong, I, I said recreation. I should have said grounds and parks.
Yeah, and the highway department.
Yes, yep. But take one of those half-time positions and make it a full-time, if I'm understanding correctly. And is that, taking the grounds and parks to full-time or highway to full-time?
I would say, I think there's a lot of deferred maintenance that's not being addressed in the municipal properties that could warrant further discussion. I'm thinking this a full-time position. And I also think that this may alleviate any pressure it puts on in the summertime when the highway department is even doing more projects that they're taking a crew member away.
And that, you know, just, just to Dave's point, Steve, it could be something where, uh, we got a maintenance position person there that does cleaning.
Well, that's al, that's also another situation.
Yes.
All, because that could reduce our costs significantly.
Right. So discussion shall happen.
That, that particular piece has come up in the past and...
Right.
There were...
Not consensus.
Yeah, due to the, like, not cleaning the building while we're working, so it mean it would be a evening job. And then it's a union position and...
Well...
But it, it doesn't mean it shouldn't be considered. It just needs to be.
It just come into a late shift. It's called shift. A different shift.
Supervising is something that needs to be shared also.
It might be cheaper to hire a cleaning that is independent rather than having a union position doing it.
Um, have you looked at our cleaning bills?
Yeah, I have, and I...
They're getting very high.
Yeah, and I did talk, yeah.
So, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, I, I, we're getting to the point now.
Maybe we should hire somebody rather...
Or take a look, retake a look at it, because we talked about this seriously about six years ago. And there were a couple of members that were in favor of it. But anyhow, I just wanted to bring that up under this discussion that, you know, we hear about deferred maintenance and we hear about a lack of follow-through on a lot of things related to municipal property. And then we also hear that the town crew stressed, um, as far as projects are concerned, would this be a solution? Obviously, we're not gonna solve it tonight or in this budget process, maybe, but we should really think about it.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Going down to materials and supplies, getting over the insurance costs?
Wait, I want to ask about the insurance cost, 'cause I, I have questions.
Okay.
I have questions. Like, how are these figures, they're so disparate? The actual was three thousand, uh, well, less than thirty-two hundred dollars, the actual in twenty-four, twenty-five, and the appropriation was eighteen thousand five hundred and ten? That's, that seems, what am I missing here?
We have a personnel change and we have a vacancy.
Oh, that explains it.
Right. So we, I can't remember, one, one of them may have been on buyout and then one wasn't.
Well, okay, that explains a whole thing, 'cause the actual was sixteen thousand and then it was, you know, eighteen. But then we go back down to seven again, so what's that about?
It, so it, it's based on the personnel we have hired today.
Okay.
So I set the, the budget based on the personnel we have hired today.
Okay, so, okay, so that's good. I understand now.
And someone might have been on a family plan. Someone might have been on a single plan. There's a lot of variation.
Yeah, sure. Okay, gotcha. It's personnel.
All right. Good to go down to materials and supplies? We've got electricity. That's, we rounded it up to a thousand. Water, we rounded up to forty-five hundred based on rate increases. Same thing with sewer, gasoline, diesel. Uh, we're budgeting at two thousand based on actuals, vehicle maintenance. Uh, you're, we're hoping that we can keep it at five hundred. Mechanic fee, we're hoping we can keep it at two hundred. Department supplies is at two hundred, and we bumped that up for department supplies. What was that about?
I actually do not remember. The prior manager put the two hundred in, so I do not know why.
So the, so we've not had anything for department supplies under ground parks and expenditures?
That's mostly because we didn't have an account, so everything just goes to eight fifty-seven facility.
Well, two hundred dollars is not material to the budget, but I'd like, it would be nice to know what was being thought when we put that money in there.
Yeah.
Then you have six fifty, sixteen hundred, five thousand, facility maintenance supplies. We took from five thousand up to six, six thousand based on actuals. Park cleanup, um, I guess that, I don't, that has been zero. Garden supplies are for the wonderful folks that keep our gardens looking good. So you know, the ice rink is going to be calculated and it's going to come out of the recreation fund.
The water usage.
Water usage. Sorry. Thank you, Dave.
No problem.
You want to repeat that so that I can make sure the, the ice rink has been...
The water usage.
And the water's coming out of where?
Our town supply.
But we're, we're having that discussion right now, because in the recreation committee expenditure, uh, you will see that there is no water line. We have no recreation committee currently. So, uh, that means that, uh, the water that's going to be used to fill the ice rink, which is going to be around fifty dollars, based on cubic footage, we still don't know, because we were told that it's a twenty by thirty, but we don't know how deep it is, whether it's six inches deep or whether it's a foot deep. If it's six inches deep, it'll be fifty dollars. If it's a foot deep, it'll be a hundred.
But it's coming out of what pile of money?
Mine. It's coming out of mine.
And what's the name of yours?
And the pool.
But that's why I'm asking...
Grounds and parks would be more appropriate?
What I'm trying to ask is what meters are being read off, because I can't split a meter.
That's right.
Unless immediately split a meter.
We're gonna do a square footage calculation like we did the cube over on Water Street, getting water for the drought.
Okay. As long as we, someone coordinates that, we leave utility department so that we know.
Jim, I believe, is involved. Jim Russo.
Okay.
And meeting with him tomorrow at one thirty.
So getting back to that, probably the more appropriate place is grounds and parks, Charlie.
Okay, take the water out again. All right. Very well. Conservation expenditures.
Hold on. Before you go on, I got a question. Sorry. Um, so when you're talking about the buildings and grounds for the municipal and the park, they hire fifty-fifty, obviously, from the, um, highway department and then mowing the lawns and stuff like that. Problem, which also comes for the winter, is that if the, there's things that need to be done in town, we lose the lawn mowing person, and he works strictly for the town for that to be for two weeks. Right. And so the grass doesn't get mowed, trash doesn't get picked up, things like that in the summer. And so I can't imagine that the things are getting done, you know, for other things also. And so if you're gonna hire somebody full-time, then, sorry to say, they can't be taken away by the highway department then. So if you're gonna hire somebody full-time to do that, then that's their job, not working for the highway department.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I've had to have, unfortunately, myself, mow the lawns because they aren't mowed, and it looks like, you know what, when they're not mowed. I mean, I, obviously, I don't mow the, you know, but I mow the pool and everything else around it. So, you know, that, I have, I don't, I mean, I don't mind if you hire somebody full-time, because that means I don't have to fight with the highway department to get stuff done. And, and that goes for getting, you know, the town signs mowed around, the common mowed, the dog park mowed, and everything else. That's the falls, everything. So that all suffers when the highway department takes them.
Got you. We'll get to your assignment. I want to finish O and M first. All right. Then we go to conservation expenditures. And you'll see that we have, uh, a tree planting budgeted for, uh, a thousand dollars, and it's been, that's level funded. Postage is level funded. Pretty much everything is level funded. Are there any questions about conservation expenditures? There ain't none. Pool. Pool director budget is went from actual of nine two forty to, uh, nine, nine thousand nine hundred and eighty. The maintenance by the water department has been budgeted at twenty-five hundred. That's level funded. Part-time guards, actual was thirty-four, uh, four thirty. It was budgeted at thirty-two. We bumped it up last year to thirty-two fifty, five hundred, and, uh, came in, actual was thirty-four, four thirty. So we're, uh, increasing... And came in, actual was thirty-four, four thirty, so we're increasing that to thirty-six thousand. Special nighttime themes, we're still keeping it, we're level funding it a thousand. Did we spend any on?
We did, we didn't have time.
All right.
Well, I didn't have enough people, truthfully.
Then you go down to insurance, I hope that's all self-explanatory. For personnel, we go down to telephone, that's level funded. The property insurance is bumped up a couple hundred bucks. Boiler machinery insurance, all right, that's all your insurance, just materials, supplies, electricity. Uh, we're gonna keep, we're, it was at thirty-one hundred, the actual was sixteen-ten, we're gonna keep it at three thousand. Then you have the solar fees, that's electricity too. Water, was it fifteen thousand? We, uh, we budgeted for nineteen thousand last year. And we're budgeting this year for twenty thousand, because of the water, water rate increase, same thing for sewer chemicals. Uh, actuals were seven thousand and we're budgeting fifty-five hundred.
So, sorry, the chemicals were kind of a problem. They're going up through the roof.
Well, I'm.
So, just giving you a little heads up.
Did you get a chance to sit down with the former manager for this?
No, he didn't call me.
Okay, so do you have a percentage of what you think they're gonna go up?
No, but when we were talking with Jimmy and when, over the summer, we were having a hard time keeping it down, because, you know, it was going up. And, and Alan was, um, you know, trying to keep us. So we were like, really cutting it close with the chlorine, running out of chlorine.
Right.
You know, so.
So, last year was a drought year, does, what is the greater usage in chlorine, drought or rain? What page is that, Laurie? Twenty-nine? No, she's looking at one hundred.
She's looking to see.
What we've spent.
Page twenty-eight. Oh my God, it's sixteen hundred spent July, August. I mean, it's June, November, but four's been closed.
What about June or the fall? I know, I know it's not in that one. Um, but, so that's cleaning the pool, getting it ready, um, putting, you know, shocking it, and then holding it till we open. So that's June, so that's the month of June.
Right, a lot of usage.
Right, a lot of usage. And then, we, um, the heat is really the biggest. The rain isn't as bad, it's the heat. So, the hotter it is, the more chlorine we use.
So, the gamble is, are we gonna have enough? Chemicals were budgeted at forty-five hundred and we spent seven thousand on the hot year. Uh, we but, we upped it, it has been upped by fifteen hundred dollars. Is that enough?
She says it might not be.
Well, again, we, it's, it's like.
It's a crap show.
It is.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I, I don't wanna, you know, not have enough. But.
You want to budget on actuals? Because four thousand has been exceeded historically.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, the fifty-five hundred seems like it could be, if you look at the average actual for the last three.
Okay.
But, I don't know, we can go to fix.
I mean, one of the things we could do is call Alan and see what the cost, to see what they're suggesting or thinking the cost, cost of chlorine might be. And that, you know, so we have a better.
The, the, the drag is, uh, we should, this should have occurred in December.
Higher time. And, and sometimes we've bought ahead of time. Like, we've had, you know, and so we've had a credit, so we haven't had, you know, to worry as bad. But lately, we have not had that, so. And I don't think, truthfully, sometimes we've had them pump some chlorine out, not pump it out, but, you know, we've had to use it. We ran out. We didn't have to use it, we ran out. So, for like, maybe that last week, we were running on fumes, so.
Literally, chlorine fumes.
Yeah, so, um.
Well, I have a question on the, the last, the line right below, ever told.
All right.
Which is, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it, maybe we could take from Peter and give to Paul here. So, the next thing is theme nights, so we already gave money for theme nights, which I.
No, the money above is for staff.
The staff themes, and then this is for?
It's for the personnel, pay the employees to work the theme nights. And the other category is for.
To buy the stuff for the achievement.
Balloon, like whatever it is, stuff.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, okay.
So, going back to chemicals, does the board want to make a change?
I represent manager, making it six thousand.
Any objections?
No.
Thank you.
Man, that's had to sit.
So then we go down to maintenance and supplies, it's been historically budgeted at four thousand. Actuals have been less than that and it's been reduced to twenty-five.
Does that, is that for, um, like buoys, ropes?
Facility maintenance and supplies. Where do you normally book that stuff?
If you're asking me, I don't know, I just give the bill to Laurie.
She's not gonna be here.
No, I know, but, so, that's why I'm asking, because I do know that we are going to have to replace some lane lines. So, that means usually we have to buy some new plastic things. We restring them ourselves, we get the wire from Kenyans and we do, you know, but I'm going to have to. And I just bought new, um, we used up the rope we had. And we bought some rope to, to replace the new divider lines that are the ropes in the buoys. We just did that, so that was done this year. But I do know that one of the lane lines is going to have to be restrung. And so that means we need new, um, some plastic.
What do you think the cost is gonna be for lane line?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we do it ourselves, so we could probably get away with a couple hundred dollars. But I don't, so I don't know if that's where that comes from, or if that comes from.
No, it comes from there.
That one?
That's what I'm, I mean, if we're talking, we don't.
No, 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 we do it ourselves, so we save money. If I had to buy them all again, yes, it would be, you know, pretty expensive. But we just kind of buy like some new wheels and, and some new parts and redo it.
Well, let's just check, take a look, that's, uh, how much did we spend? Let's not go, it's not accurate.
We can't, because it's through Kenyans, we buy the wire through Kenyans. And we didn't buy any new, um, things, the buoys and stuff, that was a different one. And I want to say we might have used, not grant money, but, um.
Current question, forty-four, sixty-four.
Donated money, donations. We may have used donations for that, I'm not a hundred percent.
Well, we, we spent all of facility supplies in the pool during November.
Okay.
There's actually sixty-five dollars over. So, anything spent in June will be over by June, I believe.
Okay, so, and, and then, but is that the buoys too? Like the, like the lifeguard buoys, do you know what I mean? Or is that part of, like, um, I don't know if that's part of, like, the.
Four thousand.
Facilities, you know, how, we have to.
How much is the lifeguard?
Forty-five bucks.
Seventy dollars.
I don't know, they're probably.
Yeah, that's one of them.
Okay.
So Laurie, if I look on page twenty-eight, at facilities and supplies, maintenance.
Yep.
I'm looking at the twelve-ten statement, is there one more recent?
Eleven-thirty.
Well, you said twelve-ten?
Twelve-ten, twenty, twenty-five.
Right, but it's got a, it's got a year to date for eleven-thirty.
Yeah.
And by that, and you're already over budget on that.
That's where I'm missing, because it's not according to this.
Down sixty-five dollars, ninety-seven cents on page twenty-eight of the.
All right, so where, so we budgeted four thousand?
No, budgeted three thousand.
Are you looking at last year, are you looking at November?
I think that's probably what I'm looking at. Laurie, you handed me so many things, I look at. Get me straightened out, please.
Uh, this is June urine.
Okay, that's why.
This is last year end, yeah, not, not this year.
Oh, that's over here.
Um, it was initially in the back of the drawer, it was a tab.
I didn't get it, remember?
Oh, oh, well, I thought when we did the tabs, they did it.
Twelve eighteen.
Yes.
Twenty-eight.
Okay, so, and just a heads up, we're gonna need, um, probably two new lifeguard chairs.
That's a cap.
Okay, well, that's five thousand dollars a piece.
Let me check your cap.
Okay, we're just giving you a heads up.
They should bump this back up to three thousand.
And I believe we just, we just used all the money that was set aside for the diving boards, we had to get a new one. So, um, so I think we had the money set aside for that, um, that was bought.
Good, the diving boards has eleven hundred dollars in it?
Yeah, that's not much for a diving board, but we don't need to replace, hope, knock on wood, uh, we shouldn't need to replace until next year.
Lifeguard chairs, you got thirty-four hundred dollars in them?
That's what we have in there.
Right. Seventeen hundred dollars a piece, you said two?
Ain't happening. Ain't happening, unless we can get somebody to build them.
Well, that's what the, I remembered the thirty-four hundred number, you were gonna, there was somebody that was gonna build them.
Right, but we couldn't find anybody that would build them. Uh, somebody said they would, but then they didn't get built, so.
So, your, your, your current deck, lifeguard chairs are made out of what?
Cedar. And, 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 um.
And they're wood.
Yeah, they're wood.
Right.
Um, we have one that is, um, that was donated through the Rotary, that is that composite. Oh, that's who's gonna make them. That's it, I know who's gonna make them.
What?
I know who's gonna make them.
Because I remember having that discussion.
Yes, I, yes.
Because I got cost estimates, because we have those at our properties.
Correct, well, um, yeah, he's, but Scott, he knows gonna build them. He already told me.
Did you hear that, Scott?
You hear that, Scott? He told me he would build them. So they were gonna actually start building them this winter. Him and, him and somebody else, and now, and Jimmy Root.
All right.
Not Jimmy, um.
So we go back to maintenance, uh, it's already overdrawn. Uh, so, uh, she's gonna, you know, she's gonna overspend the budget to open up the pool for maintenance. But do you want to increase the maintenance? Line height.
At least back to three thousand, if not.
I agree with that.
What page was that, nineteen, twenty?
Twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Five hundred dollar increase to three thousand?
Yeah.
Yes.
And what did you put the, um, part-time guards back up to? Was it thirty-six?
Yes.
Thank you.
Twenty-nine, God, I can't read the numbers. All right, here we are.
My glasses too.
So you're gonna go three thousand, all right. Uh, next thing is energy expenses, personnel services, you see it? Any questions on page thirty? Um, support services, page thirty-one. If you go down to the first, vehicle services, you bump that up from, so actuals were fifty-four thousand in twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, the appropriation for last year, or for this budget season was twenty-five. It's pretty clear that we're gonna have some legal expenses, so we bumped it up to forty thousand. And then if you just slide the ruler down, that's really the only change. We've got a thousand dollar increase for insurances, any questions about thirty-one? Page thirty-one.
I can't remember if we've already talked about this. Um, county tax, we received a notice, actually, they called Steve, that is gonna be thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, the twenty-nine thousand per county tax.
Thirty thousand what?
Three zero, four, five, zero, thirty thousand, four hundred and fifty.
Thank you. Get the bill in there, did you?
Uh, they called.
Any questions? Simon, please, what do you got?
Yeah, um, uh, Simon Parish, I'm not representing any particular entity. I've been a member of the Dog River Park Committee for a few years, I resigned from that position about a year ago. Um, I've been involved in the Northfield Dynamo Soccer Club for several years. And I live on the edge of the town forest and I, I go up into the forest. So, um, I heard you talking about, uh, parks and recreation and thinking about, you know, personnel issues there. And so I wanted to come in and mention that, um, I, I wrote a job description for a full-time position that would oversee parks and recreation. And I'd be happy to give you as much or as little detail about that job description as you want. Um, but also, I thought I would mention that if you're looking for somebody to, um, help do the work of drumming up support for a position, or going around and meeting with entities that might interface with somebody in that position. Um, that's something that I've started and earned, and, you know, just with the groups that I interact with in an informal way, but I'd be happy to participate in helping make that go forward. And also, I do not want the job. I want to make sure that's clear. I'm not interested in having the position, I'm just interested in there being a position. Because I have, um, seen it from the recreational sports side. I've seen it from the, um, sort of conservation side, the Dog River Park, right? And also, I've interacted with the community room in a whole lot of ways, right? And I kind of see those all as, um, assets of our community that could really use someone taking care of them physically, but also through communication. And so, the job description is broken up into two parts. It's taking care of our sort of public spaces that can be used by the community, right? And overseeing the maintenance and cleaning and all those things. But also, it's a big part of this communication. Maintaining a, uh, a calendar, an events calendar, uh, going to committee meetings with, um, the town forest stewardship committee and the Dog River Park Committee, but also, um, like the senior center, interacting with them, interacting with Norwich University and seeing if they would be willing to partner with our community and offer us small chunks of time where, where the community could use some of those spaces. It would be really fantastic to have a single person who has their finger on the pulse of all those things all at once.
And still does maintenance.
Well, and he's also got, like, I have it right here, he sends it to me, um, that's not a hint either. Um, but he's also got the Labor Day, you know, people, observation, and, you know, things like that. So it's, instead of those small groups, you know, just being by themselves, he has them, you know, somebody interacting with them also, not just the town manager, so.
One important piece I left out was, um, you know, reservations, right? Reservations of this space and reservations of the park spaces. And hopefully, you know, doing some good work and maybe bringing in, like, the school has facilities that might be able to be utilized for, you know, community events, right? But the school isn't probably gonna trust just a one-off person as much as they would trust a full-time employee of the town to oversee things like that.
Does your job description that you wrote have maintenance in it?
It does, for sure. That's a big part of it, because, I mean, that's one of the biggest, you know, downfalls of not having someone dedicated to that. The garbage at the Dog River Park, we would get together for our committee meetings. And the garbage was often overflowing with foul smelling things. And, yeah, and it's really unfortunate, because it, it's at that pavilion and that pavilion would be a great space for people to come to. And I'm, you know, capable enough, I can drag that garbage can away from the pavilion. But the people that really need the pavilion, right, people that need to sit down, probably aren't.
From mail in particular, I understand, they come from mail, who sit there.
So that's why I wanted to have a conversation about that in the parks and regs, because I.
Because I, I've been hearing all this for years and years and years. And Lori, didn't we used to have a position for maintenance?
Well, how far would you like to go back?
When I started. When I started, yes.
We had seasonal.
Yeah.
No, in my times, we had.
We had full-time.
Full-time.
It had gone from, there had been done, it had gone from seasonal, I mean, there used to be actually a recreation director that was part-time during the summer, that oversaw more than just the pool.
Yep.
And then there was an individual from the high school that, and that's when we used to have the playground bazaar, if you remember. Many, many. And then it went into a town part-time position that was half, in the summertime was recreation, and in the hot, in the wintertime, it cut off to the highway. And when it was that, it was pretty well split. Summer was grounds and winter was highway. And then.
Yeah, that's when we had a larger highway crew, too.
That's when we had a larger, and actually, then we had, I mean, there was the village and the town for highway. And then one of the individuals, we hired, the idea actually was that they were not as much, they weren't much highway. They were grounds and building maintenance.
Right.
As to like, if we had a problem and needed something fixed in our office, we were to call them.
Exactly.
And then personnel changed and.
Right.
You know.
Budget constraints.
Budget constraints, things got smaller, so that person then developed to do halftime highway, halftime.
My opinion is, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that is going unattended because of a lack of personnel. That's probably, if you did an analysis, is costing municipality more. If we haven't, don't have that position.
What Simon has here is like, like, even the seasonal decorating, you know, so the person that worked for just the parks and rec would help with, like, putting the stuff up and taking it down, or, and, I don't wanna talk to you, but, you know, taking care of the fountain, you know, making sure it's clean, doing the, doing the, the gardening, you know, and all, all that stuff, and the bathrooms up at the, you know, the outside bathrooms up there.
Right.
I mean, that's our job in the summer, but not in the winter, but.
In the early spring, too.
Right, exactly, for soccer and everything else, taking care of the basketball courts, taking care of the playground, and, and then the parks down in.
The falls.
The falls, right. Emptying all the trash. So, all of that stuff, instead of being done by the highway department, would be done by that person, and then the trash cans and all that stuff, too. I mean, that's one of the things, but one of the things that I really liked that he had was the fact that one person would have the calendar, and right now, that's Kent. Kent's in charge of the calendar for this, and then, but then this person doesn't know who's in charge of the calendar, and we're not updating our website as much as we should be. So, that person would also be, you know, doing some of that stuff, too. So, it's, it's one person doing.
That's an awful lot of work.
Well, it is, well, it's not, it's not, unless it's up and running, it's really not. I mean, not, I'm not talking the maintenance, the person that's doing this would not be doing the maintenance. That would be a maintenance person.
Okay, all right.
There would be a dedicated.
That's what I wanted to.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I'd like to see.
There's a dedicated maintenance person, and then there would be a rec director. Like, random.
We gotta have a rec committee first, which I hear is coming along.
Oh, I think a position before a committee, or.
Well, I say, I think the needs for building maintenance is much more immediately needed.
I agree. I just have to, now, I thought you were talking about one person that would do maintenance, and, and then Shannon's.
That is what I was talking about.
Oh, I thought it was separate.
Nope, I've written it all onto one description.
Okay.
So. I would ask you to share that with our interim town manager also.
Okay.
Oh, I thought it was two people.
Well, who knows where it's gonna morph into?
Right, yeah.
We put it in the budget, you know, if you're gonna have somebody maintenance, we can certainly have the manager come up with an idea of what we need to put in the budget for a full-time, year-round person that does all of the above. And if it doesn't work out, we know we're gonna get maintenance out of it. Hopefully, we'll get what Simon said, where you've got somebody that's able to schedule themselves, so they're satisfied. You know, get him a phone, so he's, he can text us stuff. Yeah, I think, I think it's something that really we should move forward on. I don't know if we're at the palate for it this year, but we definitely should seriously consider it in the next budget. Because I've been sitting here a while, and I hear this constant, the trash isn't picked up in the falls, this isn't done, this isn't done. And there's really no one to go to for it, and the manager has had to go call the water and sewer department or the highway department to get that done. And we, we have work that needs to be done, but we have no really, and just the mowing alone, I would think, takes three days, probably.
By the time he finishes everything, it's time to start over.
So, I think, you know, jobs, I wrote that down, by the way, I said, we need to develop a job description. So, you've done a lot of the work already. So, I don't know what the board's pleasure is, but I really think it's a, I think it's a, I think it's a need the community needs, and it's not a frivolous position. I think the community needs it. Deferred maintenance equals debt. So, but we gotta put it, so we gotta find out, and the manager can do this, we still have some time, if we're gonna do it in this budget, what's it gonna cost for that type of reperson we want to attract? He can answer that until he sees a proposed job description or he develops one.
Mr. Chair? I'd be happy to meet, and I apologize, I didn't capture names yet, but I'd be happy to meet with the rec director and the gentleman who was speaking about the job description. I mean, we could set up a time to meet next week, and I could get grounded in this, and then try to prepare a proposal that addresses what you're looking for. Then you can decide whether it's palatable or not.
There is no rec director, so.
Pool director.
Oh, pool director, you mean.
Okay.
All right, very well.
All right, if they would, if they would reach out to me, so we can just set up a meeting, I'll follow through on that.
I'll give them the many email addresses I have for you, Steve.
Yeah, just give them the manager one. Just the manager one, trying to break away from the other one.
Yeah, good. All right, municipal pool, you wanna go into CIP?
Sure.
Didn't we saw on planning and zoning?
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around. Zone administrators, they've bumped up, like, three thousand dollars? The working compensation, FICA, childcare contribution, those are fixed based on salary. Telephone's pretty fixed, just going down the page, everything else is free.
Yeah.
Level funding. Economic Development Director, the salaries down on three thousand, then you have the benefits associated with that increase. You go down to telephone and all the fixed items associated with that, it's essentially level funded, I mean, ten, twenty dollars here. That's page thirty-three, page thirty-four is debt retirement. You have capital improvement debts. Lori, whenever I see a yellow block on page thirty-four, and it says debt?
Well, it's not, it's debt and capital, the debt didn't change the capital. All that means is, the yellow was just things that the subcommittee changed from the first draft, that's all.
Okay. Any questions about page thirty-four?
Wait a minute. Oh, never mind, it's debt. I saw that Hazard Mineration Grant, that's what I thought of. We had some discussion about that, I guess.
Page thirty-five is your existing debt and its expirations. And that ends that, now. Have we done municipal capital, I don't remember, I don't think we did. Sorry, municipal pool capital, did we do pool?
I think.
I think we did.
No, because I'm in capital.
I didn't think.
That's my mouth, three men in committee.
Oh, I missed that.
I don't think. Page sixty-two, you're here. So, the first draft was the pool filter, and it sounds like.
Lori's got something. The first page is on page forty-nine.
Forty-nine? Thank you. We have a page forty-nine, and we have a, we want to hold by seven hundred and fifty dollars in paint in the pool, and we have it budgeted to be repainted again in thirty-three, thirty-four.
So, who's fixing it before then?
That's what I was gonna be my next question.
Because they did a garbage job, and it needs to be fixed. Before we fill it back up.
Who was the painter?
Last year.
I know that Mr. Russo has. I know he's aware of that, and I thought was working on that situation, but I don't wanna speak for him.
I don't remember. Well, Shannon, you're gonna interpret code language, what needs to happen there?
So, they painted it, and they didn't do a very good job of painting it, so as soon as we filled it, the paint peeled. The, where they fixed the skimmers, that, that all peeled. They used the wrong kind of caulking, so that all came off. They walked all over the cement with wet paint, and that, that, I mean, that can be sandblasted off, or, you know, but it, it's, so some of it's peeling.
But they also didn't put sand.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's, I'm sorry, thank you. And there's no sand in the paint, so it has to be repainted, otherwise it's, we had to get those big black mats again to keep everybody safe, because as soon as you step on it, boom, down you go.
Did we pay them a shitty job?
We did.
Yes.
We paid the bill.
I was not aware of any problems until about two weeks ago.
Okay. Very good. Excellent.
So.
I was just astonished, the cat must have been as big as a napkin.
Charlie, as far as I know, Charlie was getting back to them to have them come back, but we'd already, you know, we'd already had.
Well, you lost your leverage soon as you paid the bill.
Sorry, Charlie. Geez, I'm losing my mind, too. The manager was having them come back after we closed to repaint, and I know that did not happen. So, that's why we emptied all the water out, that's why Jimmy emptied all the water out, so they'd come back and repaint, so we wouldn't have to wait to reopen, and it didn't happen.
Mr. Manager, you've got something to follow up on?
So, I'm not sure, I thought they were out of Connecticut, but I'm not a hundred percent sure where they, where they're out of.
Well, I guess we'll have to take a look at the contract to see if there was any warranty on that, would be my first step. And I bet you it's gonna be right next to the tax code.
So, yeah.
That's an inside joke for viewers. So, all right, the pool thing, we'll see if we can find a warranty. So, we may spend twelve thousand, part of the twelve thousand, five hundred correcting the bad paint job.
I hope we don't use them again.
And what do we have left in that account for this current budget?
What did you say, we can hope you don't use this thing?
It's already, we already spent seven hundred and fifty dollars more. That twelve thousand, five hundred might be going towards legal expenses for the purpose of adding a new paint job. God, I can't believe that.
So, also, I was just looking, I mean, the twelve, the replacement year should be thirty-four, thirty-five, if the pool was done in twenty-four, twenty-five, I think it was supposed to be done the year before.
It was.
It was.
It was.
So, that should be thirty-four, thirty-five, but we, we're gonna estimate the cost of one twenty-five, there's not enough money. So, that's nine, I'd be like a hundred and twelve thousand. Hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. Twelve five, not twelve thousand.
And where did that cost estimate come from?
Can you answer that question?
They, they may have been the ones, were they the ones who also replaced the the, of skimmers? Did they also do that, too?
Yes.
So, that was part of the paint job, too.
The same company, the water steward department did, I think, two skimmers.
They did.
The same company that did the pool painting did the skimmer replacement, so the.
So, the next line item is, well, we've got the pool, and that was a very sad discovery. And by the way, for any department head that sees a project that's done substandard, that use the, use the chain of command.
I did.
Copy the board. It's, we can at least ask it, but we had, we, we experienced, I would say, cop to the chair. That's what I would, copy to the chair. Does somebody know?
I thought that was Jimmy's job, not mine, so.
I will, I'll just put in from an employee's perspective, employees don't contact boards, it's work for the manager, that's, you know.
Yeah, that's the chain of command, I didn't take it wrong. But, there's nothing wrong with CC. There's nothing wrong.
This is how, how is there any, now is when I get to bring this up, how is there any oversight?
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Well, how can we oversee things if, for example, I wanna ask her a question about toilet paper at the pool, and I can't, because I have to go through somebody?
We have in our personnel policy and manager directors, directives, that state clearly that there is what I call a tickler file. And it also states clearly that every conversation that he's had, that, that the manager has with outside agencies, higher authorities, should be included in that tickler file. That's not, that's separate from the personnel policy. And it was designed so this type of stuff wouldn't happen. I was not aware that the paint job was.
Subpar.
Didn't meet the standards, were you? I remember some vague conversation that the town manager, it may have given us in his, a manager's report or some verbal, that him and Jim Russo were, were working with the committee, and that, that even proves it, because they were pumping out the pool. I do, I do remember something to that effect, but nothing to the, to the level.
Normally, we leave the water in the pool.
Do you remember that there's footprints of paint? No, that I did not remember, I remember. That's the first thing that I would say, that's a sloppy job. Yeah, I do remember.
Yeah, that's pretty rough.
The stuff around the skimmers, not doing a proper job, I do remember hearing about that.
I think it was talked about here, I definitely know, because I saw it.
Yeah.
So.
But I think.
Before we even filled the pool, there was paint everywhere that we had to clean up.
Terrible, it's just terrible.
And then, but that was not the issue, was the fact that it was so slippery, we had to go to Kenyon's and buy the black mats, or we had clothes, because it was just, I mean, we were having, people were falling, you know, and, yeah, people were falling.
I love that.
His little, and so, that's the point, you know, so we had to, we had a few write-ups where we had to do paperwork, because we had people fall. So we went out and had to pay a hundred dollars per mat and I think we got fifteen of them, because we had to, or we had to close, so.
And so you could walk in the pool without such a kind of thing.
Correct. And that was only part of it, that was just the top half of the slopes for where the water met, where the, where the pool water met the.
The water's edge.
Water's edge, so it only went down, what, four feet each? And then, so, you know, you still had to be careful, we had to tell everybody, you know, wear your water shoes, make sure you're, you know, so.
That's a real serious suiting weight.
Well, it's a liability.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a liability.
So maybe the manager should give us an estimated cost of repairs that may have to repair at the pool before we reopen.
Oh, yeah, it has to be painted before, we shouldn't open without, I mean, I mean, granted, we still have those mats, but we shouldn't be using those mats.
And you should look.
The mats aren't like.
No, they, they moved and they're, and they're hot.
A tripping hazard of their own.
And they're hot.
And you should look into what exactly happened by asking staff. Because staff may have better knowledge. People over there?
Yeah, but the thing is, we can't ask them.
No, Jim.
Oh.
No, the manager can ask Jim.
Jim, oh, the manager can ask.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Well, no, it's not our job.
It's not our job.
But the problem is if we have to do, I, I'm gonna repeat myself, if we're doing oversight of the manager.
Then we don't have a good manager.
I know that, but how do we know that we have a bad manager if we can't ask somebody, did this happen? Or how did it happen?
Outside of the script, this conversation.
I think that conversation can be later.
I know, I want, just wanna get it on, it might be free.
But it is no good when the.
Steve's throat is everywhere there, so.
Absolutely.
Poor Steve, I'm sorry, Steve.
Would've been nice if we had been.
If we had been what?
Micro managing, because we would've seen this.
We did know about this, unfortunately, I hate to tell you guys, we did know, we did know. Not the degree, I think we were told that it would be taken care of.
Yeah, exactly, we didn't know the degree.
Yeah.
Well, I'll check my tickler, but I don't think it was on there.
No, probably not on the tickler.
Right, so there you go, you've got a problem with the vendor, you put it on the tickler so that you can tickle it. What's the next page you guys want to do?
There was nothing like that on the, that.
No, it was not.
Laurie?
Mr. Mark? So building facility improvements in the pool bathhouse.
Thank you.
So.
You have a balance of eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollar. You have an estimated cost of rebuilding that of, uh.
Too much.
Was it a hundred and eighty?
Something like that.
So, it, it budgeting the way we got it down in twelve years, we'll be able to do it.
And then it'll cost.
Even more.
Yeah.
By then, plastics will have taken over and then we'll be fine.
Okay, so. So there's eleven, we, right now we've got two accounts. And the building facility improvement, the party manager put in another ten. My thought is he must have meant for that to be toward the pool bathhouse project. It, there, there was an issue with the bathroom, either last year's budget or the year before, there was a discussion about the bathrooms needing work, I mean.
What bathrooms?
At the pool bathrooms.
At the pool.
Which I thought got incorporated with the pool bathhouse project, but I wasn't positive, I wanted to make sure this ten thousand wasn't to deal with the bathroom issue separately from the pool bathhouse rebuild issue, I'm trying to figure out where this money needs to go. Because we're, the pool bathhouse itself, we're gonna need twenty-five hundred dollars that is not covered by ARPA. So that pool bathhouse for the architectural design will be two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars short. That was not covered by ARPA, so I'm trying to figure out whether we need to budget that or the building facility ten thousand is really also the pool bathhouse, I, I don't know.
Well, we have the pool director, has the toilets in the bathhouse been fixed or what is the problem?
Uh, they need to be upgraded and.
But are they functioning?
Some days. The problem is the.
I'll just keep Charlie out of there.
Some days, or what, what's happened is that the roots have got into the pipes.
Yep.
So when sometimes the. The showers don't, um, they won't drink. So we've had Gillespie's come up and they cleaned them all out, we worked great for a while and then we have issues. So I know that Walkability came up and they, that's what I believe she's talking about with the bathhouse project and, you know, so I don't, I don't know if that was grant money that they were looking for to help, you know, fix, but there are slopes that need to be fixed because of wheelchairs, that is, there are doors that aren't wide enough for wheelchairs, so that, you can't get down the hallways with wheelchairs because of the way the doors are, are made, so they can't look down in there, so I don't know if that's the bathhouse project or if, or what you're technically referring to. There are things that need to be fixed before we should open, especially for the wheelchairs, you know, at least the ramp going up to and out the pool, so, but that's a, that's some cement, not, you know, renewing the door, which needs to be done too, but I think that's what Walkability was doing.
Can you open the pool for that, with the paint job you have now?
No, it's not safe.
So there you go. We have to make all these decisions based on an unknown, whether we're even gonna get somebody in there to paint the pool and we don't have enough money to paint, to fix it. So approaching, the reason we have this budget is because of the pool. The pool apparently cannot be opened in the condition that it is in now because of a poorly done paint job. So we have to fix the paint job first, otherwise we don't have to worry about people going into the bathroom because there won't be a pool to use. I hate to simplify things, we have to decide what's gonna go on with the pool before we, as I said and recommended, I think this is a project that the man, current interim manager needs to consult staff and find out where we're at with the project and where we're at with the vendor relations. So let's take, let's hold off on, we either throw some money. We're not finishing this budget anytime soon, as much as everyone wants to.
We're gonna come back to this.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So I don't know what that ten thousand was put aside for, if it was for, like, to buy new toilets, which.
I doubt it.
I don't think so. I think it probably was more towards the whole.
Access.
The whole project, you know, for the bathhouse, but I don't know.
You know. We have several major capital intensive projects that we need to discuss financing options for, one of which being the common, just can't address that silly woolly and it's not appropriate, we're not gonna do it, and then we obviously have several other competing projects, one of which is this possible renovations or rebuild of the bathhouse, but. It's not gonna be solved tonight. Very well, what's the next item that you wanna discuss, Laurie?
That was all on that page, I just needed to clarify between building and pool house.
Can you tell me where the other line item is for that building facilities, you said there were two?
Right. Well, it was, he, he had gotten into capital equipment on page sixty-two, I was just saying there was a capital improvement on page forty-nine.
So the, the eighty-three hundred, eighty-four hundred that's in a negative. Is that the ten thousand that, that brings that back to?
No, the eighty-three hundred is, is.
ARPA?
The eighty-three hundred is ARPA money. But we will be two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars short, that cannot be covered by ARPA because the contract wasn't in effect by December twenty-fourth. So I, that line will be a negative two thousand four hundred and seventy, so I was trying to figure out whether we should fund something for that line item or we'll be combining the, the building facility with the pool house or.
Project.
So we, you will be two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars short for the design of the pool house, bathhouse.
For the blueprints and stuff?
The, the whole, the contract though was thirty-six thousand, there was an addition to the contract that came after December twenty-fourth deadline, so it couldn't, it wasn't eligible for ARPA.
The deadline was actually December thirty-one, though, wasn't it?
December twenty-two, twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-four, December, oh, gotcha.
There had to be a contract in place by December thirty, those twenty-two, twenty-four.
Well, that's a needs to be addressed. We gotta identify what the ten thousand dollars the previous manager put in for. Was it addressing the other access problems that they had identified? But those are things that we need to address. I mean, the twenty-four seventy needs to be addressed.
Because that, that would bring the building facility to twenty, almost twenty-two thousand, because there's eleven-nine there now and then exactly, they were adding another ten.
I'm wondering, do you think that was maybe for the.
So would, would the board take the pool bath, bathhouse deficit and put it into the building facility?
Well, I would, I would transfer my.
Just take the twenty-four hundred and seventy out of the ten thousand proposed, that's what I would do.
So it'll be twenty-four.
Until we find out what's going on.
Bit of money towards.
Yeah, for now, the fix can be, take twenty-four seventy out of the ten.
How low is that?
And then if the manager can consult with staff on what the current status is up there. Sorry to add to your list, Steve.
Your list is so long, oh my god.
Yeah, I just gotta make priorities. Well, he gets to do it in four hours a day, we'll be there to help you, Steve. All right, where are we going?
Oh, we're doing sixty-two.
Page sixty-two, pool filter. We have a balance, the pool filter is Rule Three, it's a reserved fund, it is got a twenty-two year life, estimated lifespan, and we are told that it has no issues. Can we verify that? Shannon?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Pool filter, we're told, has no issues, is that correct?
That would be a Jimmy question, not me, I didn't intend to touch anything.
So we had ten thousand dollars and we changed that to seventy-five hundred to continue funding for its replacement, which is expected to be somewhere between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars. We've got ninety-one thousand in the budget now. Yeah, yeah. Okay, pool vacuum is a twenty-one model, it's, so it's five years old, four years old, five years old, it's got twenty-eight hundred dollars in the account. Expect its cost is fifty-five hundred and we're putting in five hundred dollars because it's gonna be a year, because it's gonna be replaced in thirty, thirty-one, another six, five to six years. Diving boards, we have one thousand seventy-two dollars in the budget, they're forty-seven dollars, forty-seven hundred dollars each and we're putting five hundred into the diving boards a year. Their lifeguard chairs are thirty-four hundred dollars, we're gonna have someone rebuild those and bases and everything else is zero. Are there any questions on page sixty-two? Harry Nutt? What's the next one? Miss Lane? Yes.
Miss Lane.
What page is that?
Well, we can, um, I know one of the issues, somebody had brought up a good point, that last year, for revenue on page three, last year the board voted to eliminate the charge for swimming lessons for Northfield residents, and I, I think frankly we forgot that when we put the budget together. Um, so we put in fifteen hundred, we only received ninety-four hundred dollars, uh, ninety-four, ninety-four dollars, sorry, in swim lessons, so I would suggest we drop that from fifteen hundred to a hundred dollars, unless the board is gonna change that vote. I didn't look at the vote, actually, I, I thought it was an ongoing, I didn't think it was a one-year, I don't, I'm not sure if any board members remember that.
Yeah, I don't know that we even really, like, specified clearly whether it was intended to be a one-year trial or what the, I don't know if Shannon has comments on how it worked, I know Mary was concerned that there were problems.
Well, there were problems. So the problem is, you know, we, we, should we charge out of town people, obviously, for swim lessons, but I can't really, you know, say that they live out of town if they have a town address or a post office box or whatever, and the other thing was, you know, it's first come, first served, and then when people don't get their child signed up, they weren't real happy because, you know, they live in town and, you know, so it, it wasn't, it didn't get too snarky, but it, it had some, you know, because I, I can only teach so many, you know, ten kids per, you know, time slot.
Yeah, well, it wasn't advertised, every child in Northfield will receive, it, it should clearly say first come, first served so that there's a capacity. Did people seem appreciative?
Oh, absolutely, and some people still wanted to pay.
Yeah.
So, and, and so we were happy to take their money.
Yep.
You know, but if, we did tell them.
And what I looked at is what we're charging for lessons compared to other communities nearby is very reasonable.
Absolutely, that's one of the reasons.
Extreme.
Yeah, we're probably the cheapest place.
Oh, yeah, by far.
And, and we were, you know, it was one of the, one of the nice things, I mean, we were always full, you know, maybe that first lesson isn't because the water's so cold, but, but everything else was, we were full.
That's good.
Right, exactly, and so if, I mean, if I could get another WSI, you know, absolutely, and right now I actually have somebody who's interested in, in teaching with me, so we may, you know, have a little bit more to go with, but.
I'd love to do the free lessons again, but if there's ways you can make it so that it feels like it works better for you.
Well, I mean, it, it's first come, first served. I, I just can't do anything other than that, and once they're full, it has to be they are full.
Yeah.
Because it's for safety and everything else.
Yep.
You know, but then, again, I have to have the staff.
Yep.
To be able to, to guard.
Yep.
And so.
So what do you wanna do with line item? Reduce it to a hundred dollars, you're saying?
Correct, well, that was my suggestion. We only, we made ninety-four dollars this.
Which line item is that?
Page.
Line item forty-three ninety-two.
Okay.
Page three.
Yeah. And you're reducing that to what?
One hundred, well, the. One hundred. Well, the discussion is the one hundred from fifteen hundred.
Yep.
Because we only raised nine nine ninety-four dollars this year.
This is the placeholder?
Yeah, well, it is.
I would say that's realistic. If it's over, it's over.
Yeah, revenue. Anything else, Miss Lanning?
Um, I don't know if you're prepared to buy a list of. There's a lot of issues that we were gonna go back to, but I'm not sure that's that's kind of good with.
I would say with ten minutes left on our meeting, it would not be a good thing.
Just a reminder, you had talked about coming back to um building maintenance for several of the farms after talking with the contractor. So maybe not tonight, but just a reminder that that's one of the things we need to come back to.
Would you have a maintenance man that's interested and he's gonna do a lot of things like hang the TV, the monitor? He's got some other things and he said he'd get back to us uh next the first next week. He might even do some work.
So do you think you should prepare a list of things that we have got to address and then develop an agenda from there?
Yes, working on that.
Yeah.
Are we meeting next Tuesday? Is that when?
Well, we're gonna have a discussion about Bill Frazier also. We need to meet with Bill Frazier next week.
Yep.
So I need to know the days that you days and times that you're available to meet with Bill Frazier for discussion. Purposes of discussing the process for hiring a permanent manager.
So I think some of us trended in on email today.
I did.
Our availabilities.
So it's out there? I haven't.
Yeah, so Tuesday and Wednesdays are my days off so that I can. But I also said I can flex my schedule for this important subject.
So I think Wednesday then can work as long as Mary, you're gonna have a double meeting.
Well, you can schedule it at a different time and then I'll go.
I'm totally flexible.
Yeah, I mean, I can I can go from one meeting to the other, but I'll make as much sense as I ever do.
Bill's not available Tuesday, so if we want to do a budget meeting.
And I thought about Thursday, but Thursday, I don't know, nobody yet mentioned.
That's my most difficult day.
Right, okay, never mind then.
Could I just give like a just a quick rough idea of the things?
Yeah.
That we have because we're, you know, next week is the next to last week of January. So we're approaching that and really do this one meeting.
Taking time, Lori.
For the meet two. So the ambulants, ONM, the board was thinking about all of the requests that Chief made.
Yep.
Um, there are a couple changes that I'll suggest that will should be quick. The um grounds and parks, oh, the building maintenance issue, um, that was we talked about tonight. I've got to give you the proposal for changing the highway to seven years CIP. And the fire trucks, the aerial that we're borrowing for, trying to get that up to half. We have.
Now, repeat that again about the fire trucks.
So fire equipment, it was the aerial truck and both pumpers. We are currently not funding enough to um fund a half and borrow half.
Got it.
So I believe the proposal was or the suggestion was can we get to what would it look like if we increase the funding?
Yep.
To fund half and then borrow half.
Got it, I remember that.
Um, the change with the Main Street Bridge and the Slaughterhouse Bridge. And then we have new unfortunately new numbers for some of the ambulance equipment. So we'll have to go back through that. Hopefully that will be quick, but have to let you know the new numbers. And then we'll have to talk about how we're gonna use the surplus to hit the proposal down because without the use of surplus, we haven't talked discussed that yet. Without the use of surplus, we're at between eight hundred and nine hundred and seventy thousand increase, which obviously we would never go with that number because we haven't talked about surplus at all. But it's just the item that we have to discuss.
So lots to discuss and make decisions on.
So she's saying what you're implying is that we need to have another meeting next week.
Easily.
Yes, that feels fine.
We're gonna have, if we're gonna stick with two-hour meetings, we're gonna have more than one two-hour. We're gonna have more than two two-hour meeting.
Well, there there was quite a bit to the ambulance.
Yep.
Conversation that.
That's been the big one. That's been the most burdensome, so we should tackle that one first.
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, what about Tuesday?
So budget on Tuesday, Bill Frazier on Wednesday. What time uh for Bill Frazier?
I can't do it at between six and eight because that's when that's the Riverwalk.
Six PM and eight PM?
Six to eight AM.
PM.
Yes.
So.
So it's earlier in the day because I'm not coming to a meeting that starts at eight.
So I'm I'm totally flexible on that Wednesday.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, John? Yeah, I'm okay. Well, I may be the only one that's not there because I have meals on I have Farmer's Market.
All day.
Well, it we'll see.
We're talking on Wednesday, the twentieth.
It's a matter of what the weather has done. We could if we we make deliveries and if it just depends where the weather's going.
Because I don't think we want to delay that another week, do we?
No, no, I don't have to be there for that. I've already given Bill, I know what this involves. And if I have to leave to do my thing, I'll leave to do my thing. So I'm gonna shoot for uh.
What would be the best time that it might work for you?
On a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Between uh between three and five.
Okay.
That would be nice for me as well.
It's for me, it's fine.
So I have to check what Bill has to do with that.
Steve up here, that you're talking about.
New term manager.
Steve gets to decide if he is.
Okay, because we're trying to set up a meeting before go that way, so.
Well, we'll overhaul that.
I'll go back and look at emails and and folks to build and.
Okay, you'll check back with Bill about that.
And I know how to get get over that.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I saw it. Thank you. Fucked up on my.
So I'm curious on outlook.
Thank you.
So I whenever I communicate with you guys, I it's you know I'm doing line copy, right?
Yes.
Is there a way to just put all of you in a group?
Yes, there is, yes, absolutely. It's called an address book and you can have a subset of an address book. I'll be more than happy to give you a consult on that.
How much is it gonna cost me, Maxwell?
Just give me a credit card.
You don't come cheap, Dan.
Yeah, there is.
All right, so it's it's called address book because I Googled it and I it it's somewhere in there and I don't know. But anyway.
I have about twenty of them.
No doubt. Uh, public participation unscheduled. Do we have anybody from the audience?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I wonder if it'd be beneficial to talk to the all-queen about twice a week going around town emptying the trash cans.
All right, that's a manager's thought. We'll see what we can do.
Well, our vendor right now, I believe, is Casella? Or is it Myers?
Myers.
Myers.
Lori, what was the question?
He's wondering if it would be reasonable to have a local trash hauler empty our trash cans on the common and on the park.
Twice a week.
Twice a week, just something to think about.
Well, we have a trash hauler under contract, Myers.
How often do they pick it up?
They don't. Our personnel should be doing it.
We have a.
So that's finding out a key thing again, which I don't think is really addressing the real problem.
I agree.
We have a.
But that could be a short-term solution.
Myers has the dumpster. They don't trash pick up actually, right. So from the streaming audience, is there any interest in public participation at the end of this budget meeting, which I'm sure had you sitting on the edge of your seat? Harry Dunn? I see no hands up. I see no.
So you have a meeting next Tuesday or next?
Tuesday. If there's something specific the board would like on the agenda and we want the department head back.
He said ambulance.
Ambulance is is one of them.
Take that up with Steve.
And do we want to have have do we need to have their department head back to discuss what we already been we've already discussed?
I don't know. It sounded like Megan was gonna try to get information from other towns for us to look at. I don't know if you don't have that or not.
So ambulance one, is there a way to do a generic budget discussion?
Sure there is.
Budget recap would hurt.
But I think what she's getting at is are anybody else we need to invite?
I think we're pretty solid on highway. Fires with the exception of budgeting for what used to be a four-hundred-thousand-dollar apparatus, which is now a million-dollar apparatus.
Yeah, well, I gotta ask Lori something about that.
Leaving the chair, don't we pick it up?
Leave him here.
So we'll have a general budget discussion on Tuesday, of which we'll lead off with ambulance? Is that what I hear?
That's correct. And then I think you can say budget recap with uh.
Change.
All the all the outstandings could be under that.
Yeah, we'll we'll.
Building maintenance. The generator list from round.
Maybe Lori allow me to have a copy of her notes because I know she won't give me her notes. But then I can do a uh quick for the boards that are familiar with. I think that's good plan.
Do an email.
And we probably probably gonna have to do it one more time, please.
Because that that is some big number, big numbers that we're talking about. I mean, we're talking about.
Right.
One point four million for or one point three million for a fire truck, so.
Right.
One point three million. For something that lasts twenty years.
So can I make a motion?
Make a motion. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
You know, I noticed that when we made a motion, it's slow unless we adjourn. Then it's late. Okay.
I don't ever want to step on anybody's toes and Mary and John are the dynamic two of you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here.
So Lori.
Do you channel these up here?
Apparently she did.